So ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming in out of the cold. I apologize for being a couple of moments I was stuck in another meeting. Dr. Brabran will be joining us in a moment. At this point, I'd like to go ahead and get started with our Resource Stewardship Goal Four Report. Ms. Kees-Gamar, you're going to be running this work session? Okay, thank you.
So well, good afternoon, everyone. We're very happy to bring you the Goal Four Report today on Resource Stewardship. Finally, as Mr. Moon says, it's a report that we have repositioned from time to time on the schedule, but we're here to share with you our report on Goal Four. And as we know, we address all of our goals annually, and this will be the final report that we get in this particular format with the hopes of the board approving our metrics and targets moving forward at our February work session, at the February Board Meeting for the strategic plan. I'm going to turn the report over to our Superintendent for Financial Services, Lee Burden. We also have our Director for the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement, Leedy Haruda. They've been working very closely on this report prepared for you today. I also note that we have Julie Fowler in the back of the room. She's an analyst in my office who has also worked very diligently with our staff on bringing this report to you. So at that, Ms. Burden?
Good afternoon. As Mr. Smith said today, I'm going to go over strategic plan, Goal Four, Resource Stewardship in more detail. And it's important to note that today's discussion looks back at Fiscal 18 and at the overarching strategies 10 and 11. Basically, Goal Four commits to championing the needs of our school communities and to be responsible stewards of the public's investment. As outlined in the strategic plan, Goal Four, Resource Stewardship, we commit to championing the needs of our school communities and to be responsible stewards of the public's investment. Today's discussion again looks back at Fiscal 18 and maximizing FCPS resources and promoting our value to the community by providing better information to increase understanding. Overarching Strategy 10 says that we'll maximize and align our resources in order to be accountable and transparent with the community regarding the resources entrusted to us. And the desired outcomes are a budget decision-making framework based on financial management principles and standards, and that the benchmarking processes will weigh major organizational operations against comparable school systems for effectiveness, efficiency, and a return on investment. The first metric is alignment of resource allocations and budget decisions to the budget decision-making framework. In Fiscal 18, the superintendent worked closely with the school board, leadership team, and the community to present the needs of the school division in his first budget for Fiscal 19. We continue to expand county and FCPS cooperation and collaboration to incorporate One Fairfax into the decision-making process. And there was a focus on efficiency and amplifying the focus on excellent equity and effectiveness. The Fiscal 2019 approved budget that was developed during Fiscal 18 focused on two key investments from the strategic plan: employee compensation and classroom resources. This metric was included in the summary last at the school board meeting on October 11th. Successful resource stewardship is shown by protection of the classroom, and that's evidenced by the 2002 additional school-based staff that had been added since '09, coupled with a reduction in non-school-based staff of 174. And during that same time, enrollment increased about 13%. I think it's important to note here, because there was some confusion when I went over this at the school board meeting, that the school-based and non-school-based staffing calculation for the WABE guide is based on a calculation that is agreed upon by the individual school divisions. And bus drivers are reported, but they're not part of the school-based, non-school-based percentage calculation. With the WABE guide, we end up being 93.4% school-based, which is the second highest in the metropolitan area of the WABE participants to Montgomery County, and 6.6% non-school-based. But there's also a chart in the budget that delineates instruction and support, and I think that's where the confusion came about. And if you look at instructional programs versus support programs, it actually ends up being 94.7% to 5.3%. So I think Mr. Moon recalled that that number was closer to 95%, but that was just a different metric than the WABE participant, school-based and non-school-based. Another metric is return on investment measures of key programs and services. This past year, we looked at return on investment professional development. We looked at cost per pupil, I mean, cost per participant, and the monetary ROI. And basically, the study asked what amount of funds is spent in relation to the number of participants? And then for the monetary ROI, is the expenditure contributing to actual cost savings or estimated cost avoidance in the future? Another metric supporting resource stewardship is capital improvement data. We had a successful CIP in 2018. The number of temporary classrooms went from 990 to 798. From Fiscal 14 to Fiscal 18, that's a 19% reduction. We do have a plan to reduce the temporary classrooms over the next years. And we also got an additional $25 million from the county in Fiscal 18 for our CIP. This metric looks at enrollment, and with the exception of Fiscal 16, we have an absolute projection variance of less than 1% in enrollment projections since '09. Most years, the FCPS variance has ranged from .2% to .3%. And compared to the WABE participants, we have a much better track record with those divisions' variance ranging from .6% to 1.5%. I think it's important to say also that individual schools are much more difficult to get within that 1%, but we do a pretty good job there. If we've just looked at what was, you know, came within 2%, we were plus or minus 2% in about 70% of our high schools and about 40% at the elementary and middle schools. The next metric is stakeholder feedback related to trust and satisfaction. We also sought and received a good bit of stakeholder feedback. We convened focus groups with representatives from student groups, teachers, principals, parents, and the community associations to get feedback on potential revisions to the strategic plan. Those groups helped us to ensure that the contents were clear and understandable, and their input was used to improve the final draft of the strategic plan focus for 2018-20. We conducted feedback surveys with school-based and central office staff about the contents and design of the strategic plan. We requested input on what was clear and understandable and feedback on the graphics. And all of this was used to improve the final draft of the strategic plan. And of course, we continued our standard employee engagement surveys, calendar surveys, exit surveys, and that sort of thing. Another metric recognizing our work towards excellent resource stewardship is the work of the Office of Business and Community Partnerships. They've increased our portfolio of business partnerships. We have 36 new completed partnerships overall, and we have more than 400 partnerships supporting all 198 of our schools. And updated, just for the record, means that they updated their purpose. The Virginia Heart Association decided that they wanted to do more, and that's what that means with the one updated partnership. We also have a number of internal benchmarks that we set goals for and are included in the full report. For revenue projections, our goal was 99%, and our actual was 99.8%. Expenditure projections, again, the goal was 98%, our actual was 99%. The fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, our goal was that we would be within 2% at the third quarter, the actual was 1.1%. The food service financial position goal is that we would be self-supporting, which basically means that we have three months in reserve, which would be about $23 million. And at the year-end of Fiscal 18, we had $19 million in the fund balance for the food services. As far as network service availability and uptime, the goal was 99%. The actual was 99.8%. Energy savings from desktop to laptop, 88% laptop up from Fiscal 17, which was 76%. Get to green, 42 schools received awards for environmental stewardship. Greenhouse gas emissions reduction from '08 to '17, a 29.4% reduction due to design strategies and operational improvements. And then recycling, our collaboration with Public Works and joint efforts with the county consistently increased our recycling by 2% to 4% every year. And then there are the external benchmarks where we compare our results to relative peer groups. The cost per pupil among WABE participants is the number-one benchmark that we use. Our cost per pupil for Fiscal 18 was ranked in the middle at $14,767. We're slightly below the average of $14,827, or $60 by $60, and the original goal is to be within $1,000 of the average. And I said, I talked about this a bit at the school board meeting in October, but I'm going to say it again. Note that all WABE participants adhere to the same cost-per-pupil formula. And it's while it's true that we do enjoy some economies of scale that smaller divisions can't, mostly in volume discounts, it's not that simple. Salaries and class sizes have the greatest impact on the cost per pupil. Prince William County has the highest class sizes, and that pushes their cost per pupil down, even though they are the second-largest division in the Commonwealth. Arlington and Alexandria pay the most, and they have the highest cost per pupils. The division that is closest in size to us is Montgomery County, and they have similar demographics, but their cost per pupil is about 8.5% higher than ours. They spend about almost $1,300 more dollars per student than we do, and that would translate to about $250 million more dollars if we had those additional dollars to spend. Their salary for career earnings are about the same as theirs, but their class sizes are smaller, which may account for their increased cost per pupil compared to FCPS. Other benchmarking includes IT customer service call abandonment rate. We weigh in at 3.9% compared to an industry benchmark of 9%. The IT service resolution satisfaction rate is 96% compared to an industry benchmark of 87%. And our Energy Star buildings, 173 buildings are certified in 2008, more than any other division in the nation. And these are the awards that we won in Fiscal 18. We won a couple of IT awards and a couple of finance awards, the Energy Star Partner of the Year in Facilities, the Virginia Energy Efficiency Council Award. And this completes the reporting on overarching Strategy 10. Overarching Strategy 11 promotes the value and benefits of the community's investment in FCPS in order to increase the community's understanding of the divisions operating and capital needs to support student success. So the desired outcomes are that stakeholders will understand where and how our financial resources are utilized, and that we will regularly and systematically advocate for fiscal resources at the county, state, and federal levels. And this next chart basically shows the disaggregated per pupil using the FCPS WABE average cost per pupil in the bar on the left. On the right side of each chart, the bars disaggregate the cost per pupil. They're supplemental to the information that's usually presented in the budget. The general education bar is FCPS's cost per pupil excluding needs-based staffing, English for language learners, and special education. So the three bars at the right show each of those specific program costs on top of the general education cost per pupil. So if you look at this and look at, you know, the gen ed cost overall is $11,498, and that's different from the WABE number because it pulls out the cost of ELL, needs-based, and special ed. So needs-based kids cost about $995 more, or about 109% of the cost per pupil. So overall, needs-based kids cost us about 10% more. English language learners, about 135%, or 35% more than the cost per pupil. And then special ed at 209%, or about double the cost of general ed. The next chart shows elementary. Again, it's a similar picture with the gen ed cost of elementary at $11,285. With needs-based, it's 110% of that, ELL 124%, and then students with disabilities at 207%. Middle schools, the general ed is $10,967. Needs-based comes in at about $923 more, 108%. ELL, almost $6,000 more, or 154%. And then gen ed at 238% for special ed. And then high school, gen ed $12,121, needs-based about 106%, ELL at 157%, and students with disabilities at 196%. Another metric is around our advocacy efforts and achievement of legislative priorities. The legislative highlights in Fiscal 18 were funding for the biennial re-benchmark of direct aid, increased lottery per pupil allocations with some spending flexibility, increased the per pupil funding amounts for the Virginia preschool initiative, provided local school boards with the flexibility to count unstructured recreational time in calculations of total elementary, allowed local school boards to request and be granted an additional 180 days when hiring a new superintendent, and adjusted timelines and mandated triggers for interventions in cases of students' unexcused abstinence. The next metric is about operating and capital needs and available resources, which basically means review of FCPS programs to ensure our alignment with the strategic plan. And Leedy Haruda, the Director of ORSE, is going to review this section for me.
So good afternoon. When you look at this slide, probably the graphic on it is something that you've seen multiple times. We've come back on each year when we've been doing the Resource Stewardship Goal reporting and shown this graphic to you. It's based on a Plan Do Study Act model, and it has at the heart of it getting to return on investment information to help us decide which of our programs and services, projects or initiatives, are really working most strongly in support of what we're doing here in FCPS. So the work that we've been undertaking over the last year has really focused in a couple of different areas, and we've been making progress in trying to align the funding and the budgeting for the projects and services that we do with the strategic actions. So the first part of it is really to identify the resources and their related costs that have been allocated to program services, projects, and initiatives in strategic action plans. This is something that is an ongoing project. We have yet to complete the strategic action plans, but the work here is really based on making sure that the funds that are being dedicated to these program services, projects, and initiatives are in support of our strategic actions. And so at the heart of it is looking to see whether the metrics that you will be voting on in the next couple of months are supported or we can see progress on them in relation to the investment of funds into these PSPIs that we call them. The second, the goal for that is really to figure out whether those projects are things that we should continue, whether they should be modified in order to help support our strategic aims, or whether some of them should be discontinued in order to free up the funding and use it for other purposes that are better suited to the strategic aims of the school division. The second thing that we've been doing is aligning the overall budgeting into the four-goal areas. Last week, when Dr. Brabran presented the budget, you saw that we had worked, ORSE had worked with financial services, to make sure that we had kind of bucketed into those large goal areas. And that work will continue over the next year or so as we continue to refine that. The third thing is to apply the strategic decision-making cycle to selected initiatives. Over the last several years, my office has been undertaking more in-depth analyses to look at some of our programs, like our English learner services. We're currently looking at our professional development programs to see whether the return on investment that's happening for some of our programs is well-suited to the investments that we're making in them. And then lastly, the plan is, on an annual basis, you would receive in your Goal Four reports an overall measure of the progress that we're making and trying to make sure these things align, and that there would be a metric to help gauge that. In addition to that, our other goal reports would also talk about return on investment information as they presented about student success, caring culture, and premier workforce. Here is a general chart of the progress that we've made. Again, this may seem familiar because we've come in each year and shown you kind of the general trend. In prior years when we reported, we talked about how we were developing the framework. You can see that the title now is "Pathway to Implementation" because we've started the implementation. The focus in the last year has really been on the plan stage. It does not mean that we haven't been doing the things as well and starting to study it and act on it, but the focus was primarily about trying to make sure we prioritized all of the goals and all of the desired outcomes that existed and the work that you did to make sure that we knew where the priorities were. And then moving forward this year, we'll be implementing those full STMC cycles, which are supported by the strategic action plans. And so now I will turn it back over to Ms. Burden, who will talk in more depth about the alignment or the bucketing of the budget back with the different four-goal areas.
So moving forward with budget alignment to strategic goals, these charts actually, the next three are new to this presentation because what we had there previously was kind of a representation of what it might look like in the Fiscal 20 budget. But because this presentation got deferred a couple of times, that was old information, and so I didn't want to put that out there. So if you look at the Fiscal 20 budget, we've already begun reviewing the programs to determine linkage to the strategic plan priorities. And this chart basically shows allocation of the entire $3 billion budget. 29.9% is allocated to support a premier workforce, which represents the increase for teacher salaries and compensation in the Fiscal 20 budget, all of the HR department programs, and some centrally managed programs like short-term disability and those sorts of things, just as some examples. 12.5% towards resource stewardship, which is your financial, the programs in the Department of Financial Services, facilities and transportation, some of your information technology, and some centrally managed programs. 4.5% was allocated towards caring culture, which are student programs for wellness, mental health, and other employee programs. And then everything else is student success at 53.1%. And note that salaries and benefits for teachers, school-based staff, they're included with their programs. So if the program is considered to be part of student success, then the salaries would also be included as part of that those students have, like the elementary program. All of the teacher salaries for elementary programs, principals, all those sorts of things would be included in student success on this overall budget calculation. And then if you look at the budget changes, they total $117.4 million, about 4.1%. And 73% of the budget increase supports premier workforce because the Fiscal 20 teacher salary increase is allocated towards this goal. Well, it's all of the salary increases, the step increases, the 1%, all of that. 14% of the increases are allocated to student success, 8% towards caring culture. And you can see the programs or the items that are included in the budget and how they were categorized. But that's why you see such a difference between the premier workforce in the budget changes versus premier workforce in the overall budget. That's it. That's it.
And I think in closing, as we look forward to our February discussion around the strategic plan, looking at how this report will change, the input from the board will be crucial as we move forward. A lot of the work around the strategic decision-making cycle that we're beginning to input now or to implement now is related to the metrics and targets that we're developing. A lot of the work is happening behind the scenes with departments as we develop action plans, action teams to do this work. We are also embarking on a process where we'll be working with our individual departments focused on return on investment, having discussions around return on investment as we start to prioritize our work that we bring to you so that you can make better decisions about how you want to allocate our budgetary dollars in supporting the work of the system. So, it all does come together. This is a transition presentation. As we said, it was the final presentation from our last strategic plan. And as we transition to this new work, we're really looking forward to input from the board to make it a meaningful report for you and ensure that it's aligned with our strategic plan and the work that we're doing to implement the strategic plan.
Okay. Thank you very much. A lot of hard work. I have a few names on my list. I would like to try with your permission to implement the three-minute rule just to give everybody an opportunity to talk first and then come back. If that's, if we're in agreement, we will start with Janie.
Thank you very much for this report. I'm glad we were finally able to get here. And we did have the benefit now, since the proposed budget is out, the addition of the two slides. So, I very much appreciate that. You also had talked about clarifying again, school-based, non-school-based, and where the WABE guide comes in. But then, other considerations, because I know Mr. Moon had also raised the issue, and looking at that differently to also include school bus drivers, cafeteria workers. I know you presented those numbers, but I didn't have a chance to write it down. And if, is it in the report?
It is in the report. But basically, if you look at the FTE count,
Right.
the WABE participants, that excludes
Right, exactly.
bus drivers because they're not FTE positions.
Right, I know that.
It's ninety-three point four and six point six percent. And again, that's an FTE count
Right.
that appears in the WABE guide.
Right.
But we also have another chart in the budget that shows the instructional staff relative to support. And that number is a little bit higher
Exactly.
at ninety-four point seven. I'm doing this from memory, so I'm trying to find it as quickly as I can
Right.
and can't.
Because the community will ask those questions.
Yeah. And that's, it's just a different count.
Right. So, if I can, I'll go back because I was quickly scrolling through the report and I didn't see exactly what chart. But that's fine. I don't want to use it. My three minutes, I'm looking for a page. I'll find it.
And those positions do, the school-based, include both school-based and non-school-based positions. So, and it's five point three percent for support. So, if you are part of instruction, but it doesn't matter whether you're school-based or non-school-based for this count.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much for the detailed information on partnerships, business partnerships, because I know that question has been asked in the past. So, we got great detail on that. Thank you for the other explanation on differences in cost per pupil. It's the first time we've gotten such a clear explanation. Again, going back to the WABE guide and the differences in the various surrounding jurisdictions. I really, really appreciate that. The only other question, and it may be just trying to figure out what's going to come from the community, because the way in this report, we are creating the buckets, which is great, and the return on investment. I'm very pleased we're going down this road. But as you know, there's been sort of national conversations and state conversations on sort of this sixty-five percent for school-based or instruction. And I don't know if we will get those kind of questions again, but sometimes the state legislators ask that. Again, that tends to be a national discussion. So, that's maybe a question and answer for later. But just thinking about when we go out and talk with communities. Those of you who've been at this a long time, I think you understand what that discussion is. So, anyway, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I think this is a good step forward. Lots of great information. Thank you.
Thank you, Janie. I gave you a little grace there. That's good. Did anybody want to respond to anything that Janie said?
No, but I'm familiar with the sixty-five percent, and the state actually puts out a report every year that shows. And we're well in excess of the sixty-five percent, as are, of course, most of the Northern Virginia divisions. So, that's not really a concern of meeting that marker for us. But it is something that's out there that people talk about. So.
Illyon, Mr. Moon.
So, three-minute rule, could I ask for clarification whether that includes staff's response time? If that includes staff's response time, I'm going to ask all my questions out first.
Spoken like a true lawyer. Yes. Actually, I tried to take that into account, so I didn't cut Janie off right at three because there was some response at there. But it's very difficult to separate that out.
Okay, thank you.
It would probably, yeah, it would be best
All right, thank you. So, I sent in some questions yesterday, but I'm not going to get to that until maybe my transfer to go back. So, let me ask you some clarifying questions on some of the slides. It deals with cost per pupil, you know, starting from fifteen, sixteen. I think it's slide number seventeen and eighteen. But let me put it this way. That needs-based staffing cost, when you put that, that separated out from ESOL and special ed, in the needs-based, we're not including ESOL, and we're not including special ed. Is that purely based upon FRM?
Yes. It's the needs-based staffing, or the value of needs-based staffing, and the, you know, coupled with the FRM enrollment. For like, say, for example, overall, on the first chart. So, it is overall nine ninety-five.
So, from Ms. Burden, Ms. Burden, since that's counted toward my three minutes, I'm going to have to cut you off. So, my recollection, based upon my historical, not hysterical, historical recollection of how this needs-based staffing formula started long, long ago, when, you know, Dr. Drager was in charge of the school system back then, that needs included not just FRM, also ESOL needs and special service needs. That's how it all began. So, but now, in the chart, when you say needs-based, you are only looking at FRM-based formula-generated additional cost. Is that correct?
So, I think that for the purposes of this report, it was to break it out so that you could see the actual value of needs-based staffing when you pull it away from our additional costs for ESOL and special education.
Just to say yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Then, I understood that. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to save my time for my go-back.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
You have a minute remaining.
Okay. So, you know, if that can be added to my go-back for three minutes.
I'm going to need a mathematician. Okay. Ms. Heinz.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for all of this. It's really helpful. I have two questions. One about cost per pupil, and then, one about energy costs. So, the first one about cost per pupil, I'm looking at slide fifteen. And you see all the way on the right, the cost per pupil for special ed, up at, you know, twenty-four thousand dollars per student. And I guess a lot of people would look at that and be kind of alarmed and say, wow, are we spending too much on special ed? And we have heard that comment before from people in the community. So, we know that the spectrum of special ed is very broad. And I'm wondering if this includes averaging in kids, for example, who go to a private provider program, which can cost the school system something like fifty thousand dollars a year per child or more?
Yes. My understanding is it includes all of the costs of special education. And so, that would include those costs as well.
Okay, thank you. That helps, right? So, we know we have some outliers figured in there.
Yeah. And you know, I mean, I've, you know, been looking at this data for a million years. And generally speaking, everywhere I've worked in Northern Virginia, it's about double for, based on the cost per pupil for special ed students. So, the fact that this was, you know, two hundred and nine percent was not surprising to me at all. That's pretty standard.
Thank you. That helps. It's not unreasonable. So, my question's about energy. I just, I looked at a few of the slides and wondered and had some questions. So, slide three, where we're talking about internal benchmarking, I think that's what that one is. And I'm wondering, are we benchmarking energy costs for facilities and transportation against alternative sources? And I assume we're not, but it's something I was wondering if we are thinking about. On slide six, are we running energy costs through this metric, meaning investments in facilities and transportation that are fossil fuel-based? And then, you know, versus those that are not fossil fuel-based, which we don't really have online yet. But that's something I think I want us to be thinking about. And then, and I see on slide eleven, and I guess this is the ROI, let me get back to slide eleven. Yeah, the internal benchmarks. The, I noticed the energy item in the report only talks about laptops, that we're not looking at energy in any other way in these, this benchmarking. Does anybody want to speak to that at all?
Well, first, the energy savings from desktop to laptop, that was the internal benchmark that we set as a goal. And unfortunately, this, all of this report and data is from fiscal eighteen, when I wasn't here. So, we can get you an answer to the question about energy savings and, you know, whether we're going to run the ROI through, you know, those kinds of programs. Yes, they will be eventually done, but I think as Ms. Harudy mentioned, looking at the programs will take a good bit of time. So, I don't know where the facility programs are in the lineup for that, but they certainly will be something that's looked at. All right. Thank you. I think I have Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. And thank you for the excellent work. I actually think that we benefited by waiting. So, it's very helpful. Just a couple of comments. The, and starting with the WABE cost per pupil on page fifteen and our objective of getting within a thousand dollars of the WABE average, I would, I'm not sure that's the right metric, folks. And the reason is just because of the very different size, structure, and structure of our school system, we might want to, going forward, revisit that. I am glad that Mr. Moon raised the issue of the needs-based staffing. I think this slide would greatly benefit from having a footnote that would clarify what that needs-based staffing is because we have the asterisk on, one student can be in more than one category. But we need to clarify that that nine ninety-five on this one actually is more aligned with the FRM. And then, on the special ed, if we can actually break that out a little bit more because there's a difference between the average cost of special ed in a building versus where our kids are included in the classroom versus when we have costs associated with our specialized programs, our center programs for special ed, like the Key Center. And then, finally, how much we're paying. It would actually be helpful on the average cost per pupil of what we pay when people are, students are sent outside of our system. Because many people don't realize we pay for that. Along those lines, additionally, where are the alternative program costs in this? And is there a comparison with WABE on it?
They're included throughout. Preschool's not included, but my notes say that elementary, middle, high, and all the alternative programs are included as part of the analysis.
But they're not in general ed, so where are they?
They probably are included in general ed, but I'll need to check on that and get back with you.
Okay, great. That would be very helpful. Thank you so much for aligning our budget with the strategic plan. You have made me a happy camper. I do think that it's going to be important, oh, actually, before we get there, on slide, have slide sixteen where we talk about the difference between the WABE services. Or you talked about the difference in how we calculate versus WABE. And I think we might want to just, we want to clarify that. And then, on the allocation of budget on the premier workforce, that's great for new money, but it might be helpful to address the question regarding the sixty-five percent, to have some sort of footnote or note that says that next year, as our investment in salaries become a reality, then that will be folded into our student success. Because that might not be noted. And so, if we can do that, and then, the premier workforce, question is, does it include professional development? And so, yet again, just a footnote in that area.
Any comments from staff? Okay. Next, we have Ms. McLaughlin.
I too will follow Mr. Moon's approach and maybe asking questions. And then, when I'm done, would welcome staff to help provide that additional information. I first want to share with Dr. Braybrand and my colleagues and staff that in years past, I've expressed concern about our goal reports. Used to be called monitoring reports, and how beneficial were they to the board's work? And I want to first say that I'm thrilled with what I'm seeing here today. I feel that so much more is being provided to us to make some really important policy and budget decisions and governing decisions. So, I want to first begin with that glow and say, Ms. Burden, in particular, with your leadership in this report and this role, it's very notable and appreciated. And to Dr. Braybrand, not to overlook your leadership as well on this. I really am so pleased at the direction we're going with today's report and echo what Ms. Corbett Sanders said, that the weight probably was beneficial for all of us. So, with that, anything I ask is just because maybe it's my individual personality. I just tend to be inquisitive and ask questions. So, it's not to point out that things were necessarily overlooked. It's just I'd like to understand more. So, going through, considering that I may end up having to do a go-back. I just want to start with perhaps slide seven and just say that to Mr. Plattenberg, I consider this really great progress on the reduction of our temporary classrooms. But Dr. Braybrand, I would put in as a next-step request that maybe you can come back to the board through Braybrand briefing or otherwise. It says, what is sort of our overall arching plan or our goal for reducing these temporary classrooms?
Absolutely. And this will actually be in the strategic plan update, right, Mr. Smith, that we're bringing to the board next month. Is that correct?
It will be part of the strategic plan update. And we know that as we look at reducing the number of trailers within the system, that it's a combination of a variety of factors. So, it could be additional resources from the county, but it's also a look at boundaries and program placement.
Excellent. Yeah, I just think that we need to work with our community understanding that the board's commitment to reducing classrooms, we can't communicate our commitment if we don't, as a division, have a sort of a plan outlined. And I think that will help our board of supervisors get behind us as well when we say, look, this is our targeted plan to do that. So, slide eight, on the enrollment projections, Ms. Burden, again, this is an excellent slide, very helpful. But I do have some curiosity about specific school divisions, Montgomery County, Loudoun, and Prince William. So, as a, just a next-step follow-up, I would like to know what were there when we when we look at the Fairfax County blue line, what, what would be their, their data accuracies over that time? Because, and the reason I ask is, in recent years, I had been told that Prince William was very good about theirs. And so I'd like to kind of benchmark us against some of the best in WABE. And then on slide 10, you know, this just goes to continuous improvement. The metric is portfolio varied business partnerships classified by type. Strategic metrics are needed for a strategic plan. And so I would like to consider the board and our deliberation at the end for next steps. Is this necessarily in the few metrics that will get reported out compared to what Ms. Hines had said about sort of our energy efficiency metrics that we maybe didn't capture? Is this one that is so strategic or mission critical that we report on this, but maybe not some others? I'm getting a signal from Ms. Kiesgmar that my three minutes are up, so I will continue with the go-back later on. Thank you.
Did staff want to respond to any of that?
So the only thing I, I would respond to, particularly with regard to our projections, one of the pieces, and it all fits together. And, and as I've sat in this role now for close to 10 months as COO, it, it's a much better look at how it all fits together. And so as we look at boundaries, as we look at program placement, one of the biggest issues that we have with that accuracy as it gets to the billing level can be related to program placement. And the numbers of students who are coming in based on AAP or other programs, and it's more difficult to track those students using data. So those are things that we'll have to consider moving forward as we think about those projections and, and how accurate those projections are.
Anything else? Okay.
Ms. Kiesgmar, I did on that one slide for the business partnership. As a next step, I would like for us to identify what we consider as the monetary value that we've, that's being displayed there. So can we capture the monetary values so the public understands that from a resource stewardship, these partnerships mean what? Like, what did we capture out of that? Does that make sense, Ms. Kiesgmar?
It does to me. It has to make sense to her.
Right. Well, and, and again, just as a, a recorded next step for the end.
And we can do that.
Sandy?
Thank you very much for the thorough report. I'm going to kind of go through all my questions and, and ask you for answers at the end. I think one, I appreciate the overview on, you know, where we are on, on the budget. And, you know, we have turned a corner. I think it's going to be time for us to be doing a, a look at where we had to cut back and because we were, we were forced to do cutbacks that we didn't want to. So one of the things I would like to know is, where do we stand at this point on substitute pay? I think that's something that we had planned to revisit, so that's, I'd like to get an update on that. I also plan to ask a budget question about restoring the, the old floor, the, the class floor. That was, that was something that we did, not because we, we particularly wanted to, but because we had to for budget cuts. So I will be submitting something on that. The renovation queue, I, I know we always go through this and we'll be going through this again in more detail when we look at the CIP. But I just wanted to, to talk with my colleagues and, and with all of you about, should we again ask for, for an increase in the spending authority? I know we just got an increase, but it's only keeping us on track. You know, the, the costs are going up again. So I think we, as a board, might want to again ask for another increase. We desperately need it, and we're not going to be reducing those trailers if, if we don't keep, keep pace. My other question, it was mentioned about measuring, I, I think it's return on investment of the English language learner surveys. And I would like to find out a little bit more about that. What, what we're concluding, if we have conclusions, or where we're going with that. And then last but not least, I think one of the things this board is going to have to grapple with is, is leveling the playing field for our high-poverty schools and our, and our low-poverty schools in, in ways we haven't yet. I know we do need space staffing, and, and that's great. When I look at the, and thank you for the detail on the foundation and where the foundation is going. I'm not seeing, and perhaps it's there, but I'm not seeing it, a concerted effort to make sure that our highest-poverty schools are getting substantial help from us and from our foundation. You know, I know I have had schools where they, when they look for a grant, they feel like they're on their own. And I do think this is something that we have to, to deal with proactively as a, as a board. And so one, one of the things that I want to raise is, at one point, the board had asked for a look at all of the gate receipts at all of our high schools. I don't believe we ever got that. I, I definitely want to see that, though, because that, that is something that makes a difference with every high school's athletic program. And I think we, we need to partner with the, the foundation, with the PTAs, somehow to figure out how, what our strategy is going to be to deal with the fact that some of these schools can, can raise private funds very, very easily. And for some, it's a huge, huge task. We made, made some efforts, you know, Ms. McLaughlin, worked on the synthetic turf task force, and it, it had a formula, a very specific formula. And that, that's a good example of what we can do. So those are, those are my questions, and to what extent you can answer them now, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I mean, I can tell you that the substitute pay in the fiscal '20 budget includes an increase for retiree, both short-term and long-term. We didn't propose a significant increase for the non-retirees because that's not where the concern was as far as where we were not being able to recruit subs to the degree that we had in the past. And so the retiree group was the, the rates that we increased in the fiscal '20 budget. That'll be gone over in more detail at the work session on the 22nd. But just to, to, to tell you what the answer to that is. As far as the gate receipts, those may be in the School Activity Fund CAFERS on the website under athletic receipts for each high school. But we can get that like in a, a table format so that it's easy to access.
Thank you. And I, I would like to get that. And I, I know we asked for it before as, as a next step on one of our...
Yeah, we can get that for you.
And in relation to the ROI work that was done on the English, the services for English learners, we can get you the report so that you can take a look at that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
In relation to the ROI work that was done on the services for English learners, we can get the report so that everyone can take a look at that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other comments from staff?
Well, I did also, I mean, my overarching issue about, I mean, I realize that's a big old topic there, but if there were any thoughts on, on the issue of funding for the high-poverty schools, you know, private funding and grant funding for the high-poverty versus low-poverty schools? If you had any thoughts on that?
Well, we're working very closely with the foundation. The foundation and the Office of Business and Community Partnerships are, are working very closely together, looking at that. I know that, that that has been an issue. We are also working with RAS to identify the needs of particular schools. One of the things that I think we'll be focused on as we look at additional support for schools is, as we look at staffing formulas in the future and, and how we're providing those additional supports and resources for schools as it relates to staffing, in addition to the other resources they might have available for grants. Because what we find is that additional dollars that schools do have, they're spending those dollars on additional staffing for whatever it might be in their buildings. And if we can adjust those staffing formulas to provide those resources, it might free up those funds to be used in other ways within their schools. And so that's one thing that we'll be looking at in this coming year to see if there might be a way to modify the way that we provide those staffing resources to schools so they can use their funds differently.
Madam Meeting Manager, I, I'm going to try to craft a next step on that issue.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Palchuk?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Evans. I didn't want to repeat what many of my colleagues said, but I appreciate definitely the direction we're moving in the strategic plan. I guess a follow-up on Ms. Evans' question, and maybe that's where you're headed, is kind of how we see the future vision of our partnerships office, our foundation. I think we've seen very successful growth in our foundation and their ability to, in some ways, partner, right? And bring in local businesses, vendors, and others to support the work of the school system. So I guess the question is really maybe to get a better sense of how the two offices are working together and how we can really maximize and improve upon, you know, the growth on the, on the foundation side as we go through these partnerships. I know that both heads of, both organizations have done a lot to, to bring, you know, new structure and, and growth to, to what they do, their work. And I guess really, perhaps this year, if it's not already being done, and if it needs direction from Ms. Evans and I, is how do we go the next step, right? How do we really take their ability to, to partner and bring in new, you know, new, new support for, for certain programs to help and pinpoint, you know, schools that could really use that? I guess that's the question, is, they seem to be kind of sometimes in unison, sometimes not. And maybe it's even confusing to those outside of the, of FCPS, how we partner with them.
And we'll be looking at that. I know that one...
Excuse me. Just one second. It, it, I just wanted you to go through all of your questions. Is that it?
That's good. Yeah, the others haven't been asked, so thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
So when I was Chief of Staff for the school system, the Office of Communication and Community Relations was part of my work. And the Office of the Business and Community Partnerships was part of that. They still reside with CR, and so one thing that we're looking at is trying to figure what the best marriage for those two offices are and possibly looking at moving that function or that functionality into a, a separate space that would still report to the COO so that we can see more synergy between the foundation and the Office of Business and Community Partnerships. We're also looking at some of the, the internal structures that are currently in place within Business and Community Partnerships, how they approach their work. We've had several questions from school board members about the numbers of partnerships, the types of partnerships, the value of partnerships. And we don't really have the data that we need to be able to answer those questions effectively. And so looking at how that office is currently structured and then rethinking perhaps the, the role of that office overall and, and what their work should be within the business community and being that liaison between Fairfax County Public Schools, the business community, and our individual schools, that's all part of this larger discussion. So we're just starting to have those discussions. We're starting to look at a lot of the data that they're pulling together so that we can package that for the board. We have several questions out now about, again, the value of those partnerships. But that's all part of this larger look. And, and we're committed to doing something different because I feel that there's an opportunity now. We have Dr. Braybrand's leadership with the business community has been very different and robust. And we want to capitalize on that and make sure that we have structures internally that will be ready to engage with the business community.
I think that's great. Is there some kind of timeframe, timeline on that? That's my only follow-up, or...
So in terms of the timeframe and timeline, we'd like to engage a little more fully in those conversations here in the March-April timeframe. And if there are going to be any major changes to that, to that structure, we would inform the board and then like to see if we can put something together for the coming school year.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Just so you know, we have gone through all the lists for the first time, so we'll start collecting for follow-up. I have Mr. Moon, Ms., was that a nod from you, Ms. Hines? No? Okay. Ms. McLaughlin, Karen Corbett Sanders, where, did you have a go-back? Did you have a go-back? No? Okay. All right. I will ask my questions, and then I guess folks can let me know if they want to do it, have additional questions. I wanted to talk a little bit about the membership projections. And I know that, Ms. Burden, you said they were more of a average. But I know that there are some schools that particularly have larger variances. And I'm wondering, for planning purposes, if it might be helpful to be able to identify those schools and have them in, in a separate category? So that's the first thing I'd like for us to think about. The second question has to do with a number of questions I've received in the community as the Title I coordinator, not coordinator, no, the liaison. And I've heard, I've gotten several, a report that the needs-based staffing is being impacted by some of the funding that we're trying to do with payment for teachers and that sort of thing. I'm wondering if that's true, if you can explain that? And then I also wanted to follow up a little bit on what Ms. Evans had to say with respect to some of the inequities that we're seeing. I'm wondering if, if some of the part, potential partners are not aware that there is a big difference between some of the funds that are coming into, let's say, you know, some of the more lucrative affluent areas as opposed to some of our more high-poverty schools? And whether it would be helpful to identify some of those needs so that the public would be, be aware of it? And then I think I have one last question. Oh, I forgot to turn the timer on for me. Sorry. I'm usually straight to the point. Oh, man, I opened the door, didn't I? Okay. I'm hoping also for the ORC. I'm, I'm thinking that we as a board, the board members, understand how that works. If you would maybe provide information for the public who might be listening as to how this information, we, how this information is reported and maybe an example of how that's acted upon. And I think that's all my questions.
And, and what I can say as it relates to looking at some of the, the monies that perhaps could come in from grants and from our business partners, the work that we're engaging in now is to try to figure out actually how much is coming into Fairfax County with our individual schools. We don't have, I, I was talking earlier and responding to Ms. Palchuk's question about understanding the value of our partnerships and, and the functionality of our current office. And right now, we don't have a true understanding of all the dollars that we have coming into the system. And so we're engaged in a major project now so that we can get a better understanding of those individual dollars and the types of partnerships that our schools engage in. It's not that every partnership goes through our current office, and so schools can go out on their own, build partnerships, engage, develop relationships, and, and receive dollars and support. So right now, we're trying to first get that sense of what the dollars are and then look at those inequities and then try to figure out a way that we can address and mitigate some of those inequities. But where we are now is really just identification. And we're in the midst of a, a survey and a Google form that has gone out to our schools with clear instructions on how to identify the types of support you're getting from partners, the dollar value of those supports, listing those that we have on record in our office versus those that aren't on record so that we can get a, a very good global look at the kinds of supports that we are getting. And then use that in conjunction with our, our foundation so that we're not at cross, you know, at odds with one another in terms of our asks, in terms, in terms of the kinds of support that we'd like to see from our business community. But it all begins with trying to figure out where we are. We've provided some information to the board at a higher level of where we are based on the information that we have. But we know that there's a lot, that we have a lot more dollars coming in that we're, we're not necessarily identifying, and so that's where we are.
Would that include PTAs and things of that nature?
At, at this point, it does not include PTAs. We're looking specifically at the business partnership aspect to, to see where we are. PTAs are a very different organization because they don't necessarily have to share... they don't necessarily have to share their books with us, so they can certainly raise funds and keep their dollars outside of the school. We only see when those PTA funds come into our buildings when they're actually supporting things, and then those dollars come through our books when we're paying for those items. But it can be difficult for us to do, to get that information from PTAs and boosters because they're not obligated to share their books with us.
I understand. I would really, and I'm hoping this is what you're describing, as a next step, to be able to get that information. First of all, as you said, identifying some of those inequities. I think, I do think that PTA contributions can be a part of that. You can have a huge variance from one school to the next, as opposed to what one PTA can do as opposed to another, and that can have a significant impact. So to the extent that we can, I know sometimes we ask for the moon. Yes, sorry. And the stars. But I think that perhaps a clearer picture of what we're dealing with might be helpful. Did you-
Yeah. As far as the enrollment or big variances, you know, my look at the actual enrollment, you know, compared to the actual enrollment and the projection, that it really is across the board, but we can get you the exact variances from school to school. And that, you know, of course, was borne out by the surrounding divisions around us who also missed their enrollment projections this fall because everybody came in a little lower than they had projected, not just Fairfax. As far as Title I goes-
Well, may I ask just one follow-up question on that? And the reason behind the question is, I think, from listening to Ms. Evans over the year, there are some schools with a significant high mobility, and I'm wondering whether that would be necessary for planning purposes. And so whether that falls in this particular purview or another purview, I'm thinking in terms of planning for those, being able to meet the needs of those schools, that information would be very helpful.
Okay. We can get that for you. And as far as Title I goes, you know, the salary increases certainly affected, you know, the Title I grant funds because, you know, those employees, of course, get salary increases as well. In addition to that, you know, the funding has come down a little bit from what we have experienced. I know that in fiscal, this current fiscal year, we do have a shortfall that we're going to be able to cover for the Title I. And in the next year, we expect the funds to be reduced somewhat, and that's something that we're looking at right now. As far as the inequities, and I think you're really talking about, you know, where PTAs are funding a lot of things and other schools don't have that magnitude of PTA support. You know, I know that other divisions, typical-
Gate receipts and things of that kind.
Right. I mean, typically, other divisions, you know, anytime you talk about needs-based, it's really more of a staffing, you know, allocation. But I do know that some of the other divisions have recognized that and now do a per-pupil allocation for needs-based that can fill the gap. Like, for example, if it's a school that's high poverty and they go to a district or regional or state tournament, they can't just stop at a restaurant and get food because those kids can't afford that. And so some of the divisions around us have done per-pupil allocations for needs-based schools in addition to the staffing that we normally see at all the school divisions around us.
So given what you just described, is there a way we could get an ex- I don't have my clock. Sorry.
Five people were talking about this thing, and all of us said, "Oh, sorry."
I'm wondering, as a next step, whether I can get an explanation of what those differences are for Title I as a result of those salary changes, et cetera.
And we'll be bringing that information to the board.
Okay.
And then, can I respond to your ORC question?
If my colleagues, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. So there is on the Board Docs library, a section in there that has ORC reports, and we've started to put all our reports in there so that they're available, not just to the school board, but to the public as well.
All right. I appreciate it. We're ready for go-backs. I think I have, oh, Ms. Erinette Kofax never got to speak, I think. Go ahead.
As Ms. Kees-Gamarra, yeah.
There was only 10 minutes.
For the record, I don't love this way to manage, I don't do it when I'm the board manager, but I guess everybody has their prerogative. No offense, Ms. Kees-Gamarra, because I know that's what-
I agree with you about that.
Touche. Couple things. I really appreciate, as my colleagues have talked about, the further analysis of this disaggregated cost per pupil. I think, you know, we've had that in different places and different times during budget discussions, but I think having it this way is very, very helpful. Thank you. So of course, Ms. Hines mentioned, you know, does the special ed contain some outliers. So of course, now that you do a really good job at doing this, we want you to do, I would, like for the ESOL, you know, how much is for ESOL 1, 2, 3? Like, if that can be disaggregated that way, if I walked out during, did somebody else recommend that as well? No? Okay. I think that would be helpful. We've been talking about the Office of Business and Community Partnerships, and I do, I'm glad to hear that that's going to be re-looked at. I think they do an excellent job at what they do. But I personally know of some relationships in my area that were, you know, it was hard, it was hard for community members, so it was like things that I brought to them, and then, and so I think maybe there's not enough bandwidth there, or, you know, things like that. I've also have talked to some of our larger community partners, like the Redskins Foundation, and they're saying, "We want to do more with you." And, but it was more felt from that organization in particular, because I've had extensive talks with them, it was felt that there wasn't enough bandwidth on our end to do what they wanted to do. So I think that's really, really important, that we look at that, because I think we're missing, missing things in that area that we could not. And in response to what my colleagues have all touched upon with, you know, the, looking at things like gate receipts, I think one of these things, and Marty, you know, specifically you and, you know, your work with Francisco's work and the Office of Equity, I think this is one of the, this is, Scott might say, a key nugget in how make, trying to make this school system. I go back, Scott, one thing you said during your first year, you said, "We're going to make every school, you know, every school, so it doesn't matter which school you go to." So when we talk about our next conversation, we talk about boundaries, and we talk about things that might have to happen over the next few years. I think that has to happen because if those inequities are not fixed, and, you know, we can do a laundry list, which I will not do during my 10 minutes, but, but I think that is, that is a key nugget because there are certain things that, it's not that people feel like, you know, lots of times, things are tossed out, they're like, they don't want to go to school with those kids, or that. I don't necessarily think that's always the issue. The issue is sometimes they look at a school, and that school does not have what that school that they are looking, that they're currently in, and they look at another school that they could be reboundary to or would be forced to go to, and they're like, "This is not, I'm not going to get the same." And that, that is, that is what we really have to, so I would consider that a key nugget. And I know that's, that takes many different silos in the organization to work toward and forward and with, but, you know, it's something that I really think we, it's a big thing.
If I could just say, 15 seconds. Years ago, we were cutting edge by doing needs-based staffing in Dr. Drager's days, over 20 years ago, but that was focused on classroom equity. What this board is talking about now is school, the school equity, and what are the other components besides class size and classroom staffing, which are important, but what are additional things that, as people look at a school and boundaries are changed, that they want to see these other pieces in place too? And that's what I see this board saying, "Take a full review of those, and how do you put an equity lens and a formula lens around those other issues? Activities, athletics, field trips, those fundraising things that are sort of the intangibles that people don't really talk about, but are a part of people's decision-making-"
Absolutely.
"-when they choose to put their roots down in a particular school boundary area."
And all those things are very important. That's the laundry list that I said, you know, to start with, that those are all very important.
And if I may just add, I'd like to applaud this board's work on implementing FCPS ON at the high school level. When we look at the dollars, and I look at this in my days with Janie at Franklin Sherman, when I look at the dollars that are coming in from our PTAs and other types of supports, a lot of those dollars are spent on technology. And when we look at the differences between the haves and the have-nots, a lot of those dollars are spent on technology. So by leveling the playing field with FCPS ON, and hopefully being able to continue that work across the system, this is one way that this board is addressing that one Fairfax piece to ensure that we have equity across the board, which, again, also helps our schools use their resources in different ways to support students, and not necessarily having to use those resources to focus on technology or separate types of programs.
Thank you. Plus another six. Okay. Now, this is a little more of a philosophical discussion I'm going to get into. I know that we have a budget work session coming up and budget deliberation, and I may be preparing for a follow-up motion, but I know whether I will do that at the time we adopt, act on Superintendent's proposed budget or actual, actual adoption, the final budget adoption in May timeframe. It has to do with teacher compensation. That, that I sent in some questions, what you think about yesterday, that's all related to this teacher compensation issue, that as far as resource stewardship is concerned, I consider, as we can, I'm sure that we can all agree, the effectiveness and efficiency of the use of resources are basically our ultimate goals. Of course, we also need to be transparent to the public of how we are spending our money. You know, we could be spending our $3 billion, $3 billion, but we're not putting, using the resources in the most effective way. We are wasting taxpayers' money. And by not using it most effectively, we're not using them efficiently either. So with that in mind, as far as workforce is concerned, that teachers, obviously, the most important employees we have in the school system. And for our school system, which, which I am very, very proud that our students, our community in Fairfax County deserves, with the best, best teachers, best teachers. I am really, I was really glad to see Superintendent's proposed budget putting in, allocating enough money to bring up the salary level of our teachers to market average. Question is, whether with just a market average, are we going to be able to continue recruiting the best teachers? That's my question. And if somebody were to ask me that question, not so sure. Not so sure. We may be treading along, but I'm not sure that we can really attract the best teachers with average salary in the market. So I guess you will, you will, I guess, you know, you know where I'm going with this. I don't think, but just by looking at the average salary, we're not using our resources in a most effective and efficient way. That's how I see it, and that's the direction that, you know, doing better than providing our teachers with a compensation, better than market average, is where we should go. That's the next step. And that's the follow-up motion I'm going to be proposing on. And just want to hear your thoughts.
I'd say this. I came in to finish the work this board started with my predecessor, and this year, we're going to finish that work. And I think it is time for the board to take a pause and reflect, is where you wanted to get. You had clear gaps, you had lags. Fairfax County had lags. It's now perhaps the right time for the board to decide, is the position of just being market competitive, the statement that the board wants to send organizationally to teachers here in our system and to prospective applicants around the state and country. So we need to finish what the board asked to have begun, and I think this year's budget will complete that, and then I think it's time for the board to begin to have that discussion, where do we want to go, and where would we want to begin to target? Because it would be a multi-year process. Where would we want to target? And I think, Lee, actually Helen, I think we even started to look at what the, the take rates were, or the leave rates were for teachers by year. When are they leaving our division? And that may be a place to start, but we welcome the conversation. I would welcome the conversation.
Since I still got some time, hopefully. But I had another six minutes that, that, I mean, thank you, thank you for not rejecting my advocacy today. And I think I take your response as a positive reaction to what I may be suggesting, what I'm, what I'm trying to suggest to my colleagues. With, I was trying to get an exact figure for percentage of a turnover of our teachers in five years. Five, I think we had that information. It's, I think it's close to about 40%. I mean, we have 40% of our teachers moving on to either do something else or move out of, out of county, to go somewhere else. So we lose a lot of teachers in such a short period of time. That I would like, would love to have a better analysis of the reasons behind many of our teachers leaving us, whether, whether compensation is in any way a factor. I'm assuming that it is a factor, knowing, you know, what we are competing against in private sectors. So again, again, recruiting the best teachers with average salary, I don't think that's going to work. We have made a lot of progress to bring up the salary to the market average, but we should do much better than that. I'm urging my colleagues to, you know, set up, you know, after this budget cycle is over, send you-goers, one step at a time, but certainly, I think we need to, that's the direction I'm urging my, my colleagues to go. And secondly, I only mentioned about teachers, but it has to be more than just the teachers. We need the best administrators. We need the best super staff, too. When we hire the superintendent, we didn't want to go out just to hire an average, average superintendent. We wanted to recruit the best. Do you not? I think that's the mindset, that's the mindset we need to have for every single position to go for the best talent out there. Thank you.
And I think that for your philosophical question, our philosopher-in-chief, Dr. Nixon, has a few statements to make.
Just real quickly. So to the point about retention, we're doing a great deal of work with HRAC, with Ms. McLaughlin's Board Advisory Committee, and Leedy, really looking at retention overall in the district. And I have, that I can share the retention for the last five years by school, that I'm very happy I have it in Excel, that I can send, that can become part of the public document here. But also, that in some of the things that we've been studying, and the anecdotal feedback, and some of the exit surveys, compensation has really not been one of the foremost issues that people have separated from us. And we hope to bring back a more comprehensive study of what some of the factors are. At our last meeting, we talked about looking at exit survey data and working very closely with Leedy and her team to really examine the turnover, things that we're seeing in terms of trends, but also linking it to some of the engagement survey data. So that will be forthcoming that we will share down the road, but I just wanted to share that point.
Could I have one quick comment on that? I think the reasons for departure versus what would be needed to recruit the best teachers could be slightly different. to recruit the best teachers could be slightly different. When you're recruiting teachers for the first time, what compensation package we are providing to prospective teachers? A salary and other benefits, the compensation package, I believe, I believe is a critical.
And I can share for those teachers who are coming to the system, their first-year teachers, they're looking at salary. They're comparing, they're at fairs and they're looking, they're shopping to see who has the highest starting salary. I know that many of our teachers and for those who may have children who've gone into education, they're not necessarily looking at benefits directly out of college. They're not looking at retirement directly out of college. It takes a while for those, those things to perhaps sink in, but it's really comparing. I've been at fairs, I've interviewed prospective teachers, and the first question they want to know is, how much do you pay? What is your starting salary? When you go to different fairs, that's the first thing that people have on their little tables. They have the, the starting salary in the hopes of getting people to their table. So that is one thing as we look at recruitment that might be very different than retention. Because once you're here, we know that teachers are looking for additional time, additional recognition. There are many different factors that might keep you here, but getting you here, one of those major things is oftentimes salary.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moon. We have Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, I'll take my six additional minutes too. I, I, all kidding aside, I know that it's 1:30. This is running until 2 o'clock. So what I do hope and appreciate is that this is important work we're doing. And so hopefully we'll get it all in at 2:00 P.M., but I plan to have another go back if needed, if it's still within the 2:00 P.M. window. I want to actually just go right quickly to what Mr. Moon said. I believe this board is very much driven by making dated, dated, data-driven decision-making. So Mr. Moon's inquiry about how are we recruiting the best and the brightest is an excellent question. And then the question becomes, how does the division determine through data whether we're achieving that or not? So I fully support his focus and desire. But I want to emphasize, especially being the liaison to the school board's Human Resources Advisory Committee this year and the work they're doing on teacher retention, without data, we're not making good decisions. So I want to just emphasize here, because the public's going to watch this, the good news that our data shows, as Dr. Nixon was saying, is that our retention rate in Fairfax County is good. It is above the national average. We are really good across the division. Where the problem is, is we've already identified among our 200 schools, which are our top 15 schools where we have very low retention compared to the division's average and the national average. And so what we're wanting to do is almost a project momentum approach, which is let's strategically get in and figure out where we're losing teachers at a higher rate and why. Surveys are going to be so important. Exit surveys are good, Mr. Moon's correct. Let's do a survey of those who accept our job offer. Find out from them, why did they think that we were competitive? Or what else brought them to Fairfax County? Those things will help us make good decisions. So I just wanted to emphasize data, data, data. So that I don't want to send the incorrect signal to our employees, our families, our taxpayers, or to the public that we're not competitive, that we're not attracting teachers. But I do want to see the data and welcome Mr. Moon's focus for not just teachers, but our employees as a whole. Going back to then my other remarks, I first want to say, Ms. Evans, thank you so much for bringing up the issue about resource stewardship and how we level the playing field for our poverty versus non-poverty schools. I am still going out and finding out that we have in our schools extraordinarily generous PTAs that are helping to fund one-to-one digital devices in our elementary schools. That is inequity for the schools that don't have that. So it's, while it's great and we're so deeply appreciative of the generosity, I want to draw on the analogy that Ms. Evans brought. The turf field task force was important because what we recognized was among our more wealthy high schools, the turf fields got done through public-private partnership. But we had a massive gap with some of our, our, our higher poverty high schools, and there were about six of them remaining out of 25, didn't have turf fields anywhere on the horizon. So as a model, what I fully support is we encourage public-private partnership, but then we have the responsibility to look and see where the gapping occurs. And the division then steps in, and maybe it's in partnership with the board supervisors, just like turf tasks, turf fields, and says, here's where we need a 50-50 support here from the county to bring in additional resource dollars to our schools that don't have these kinds of funds. Or as Ms. Evans also pointed out, maybe we need to have the foundation redouble its effort to target where the gappings are. But it is very real what is happening. Our gate receipts, what our, our directors of student activities will tell us is some athletic departments around the county have a wealth of funds coming in from their athletic boosters, their gate receipts, and others do not. And I was part of that dialogue, and it was very troubling to me when I saw that. So Ms. Evans, thank you, and I'll support whatever we can do for that. For facilities and boundaries, when we're talking about resource stewardship, I'm going to echo again as a next step, Dr. Braybrand. I really want you and Mr. Plattenberg to be empowered to come back to this board and tell us that resource stewardship includes looking at where we have empty classrooms, and that includes boundaries, to not have to be building additions when we actually have space in other schools or where we have programs that are creating a draw-off of some schools overcrowding in other schools. But what this really comes down to everybody is, Mr. Plattenberg's shop is grossly understaffed. And our boundary review and our program evaluation of where we've got programs placed in some schools, their only way to fix that is to get staffing in Mr. Plattenberg's department so we can start to do the analysis. So I think that's part of resource stewardship as a next step and perhaps as a budget, so I want to do that. Substitute usage, we know in a $3 billion operation, substitute usage annually is a big cost to the system. And that is a resource stewardship issue. I would like that as a next step consideration for a metric. That compared to the one in front of us on Slide 10, the Office of Business and Community Partnership, I welcome having that metric along with the monetary value we get from it every year, but I would like to see the added metric on looking at our substitute usage and the analysis from Leedy's department on what's going on. There are real warning signs about what's happening with our substitute usage and expenses. I also want to say that when we disaggregate the data on our students with disabilities, there is such a wide range of costs as Ms. Heinz brought up, and I would like to see that disaggregated out, even if it's within bands, because not every student with disabilities is going to cost 200%. So if we saw that, yes, Ms. Corbett Sanders, thank you, you also were excellent in citing that. But I just want to be clear about a next step expectation, which is if we had a band, kind of like Ms. Darnett Kofek said on our ESOL students, the levels, I think for, for looking at within special education, the percentage of students by number and percent, what are we looking at that run a cost? And maybe if the number is, you know, problematic, at least do the percentage, say, of our special education students, 10% are costing, you know, 300%. And then it turns out that other vast majority of our special education students are actually at more of 150%, but it might even be 110 or 120. So I think we need to know that. I'm getting the signal from Ms. Keys Kamara, so with 20 minutes still left in the works, this part of the work session, I'll just ask for a go back again. I understand there's other people.
Hold on, Megan, that, that takes a lot of time. That was seven minutes. I appreciate, thank you, it was, it was great.
I'm asking for a go back when everybody else has had time.
We have Ms. Strauss, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Smith, for bringing up the issue of technology. FCPS ON is a huge game changer in a leveling of the playing field. So I really do appreciate the work we're doing there. The other piece over time that, while we're very concerned about gaps and special needs staffing and all of those pieces that are so incredibly important, what has kept Fairfax County Public Schools out of truly the deep end of the bond with other school divisions is that we do not allow parents, PTAs, what have you, to pay for teachers. And there are other schools and school divisions and charter schools across the country that do. And that is a death knell for trying to solve gaps where you have high-poverty schools. Because if you allow teachers, and in the 30-plus years that I've been working with the schools, that has been a tough road because parents will say, well, class sizes are too big and we'll just, you know, get 10 parents and we'll write a check and we'll hire the teacher. And we have steadfast, many iterations of school boards have steadfast and said, no, the staffing, the actual staffing, the adult salaries must come out of the tax base. And we will staff schools with high needs at a better staffing ratio. That has gone a long way towards addressing the, the needs of our kids. So kudos to us, and I hope as I retire, that school boards will continue to keep that firewall there. Because then you, you lose all ability to have a, to make up for those deficits that children come to school with and based on lots of other needs. The, also with special needs and special ed staffing, we have had budgets before where we have looked at, at category A, category B. We can do that, I mean, that's, it's probably deep in the budgets. It does create a blowback in the community. And so you have to, because then some people are going, well, why are we paying for these children who are so expensive? And the most expensive is ABA for two-and-a-half and three-year-olds. So that's the caveat on the other side. But we have, we have broken it out in that way in the past. The other interesting thing, again, looking every year at the audit of student activity funds, and it's something that for years I've always looked at, it is fascinating to see. It does not always track socioeconomic status of parents. Your gate receipts tends to be on the winning athletic team. Some of our schools that have had the history of powerhouse football teams, in those years where they are competitive, their gate receipts are way up. Or it's usually football and basketball, your other sports never bring in enough money. The other one interesting piece at the elementary level in the PTAs, yes, you will have some parents that just simply write big checks. Sometimes those schools, however, writing big checks like for Stop the Hunger Now, which the Langley Pyramid does, they raise huge amounts of money, and that goes directly to a charitable foundation that helps feed children throughout the world. It doesn't come in through their activity fund. So we do have schools that are very generous, and it's shared with needy children around the world. But it is good to look at those gate receipts, but it does not always track socioeconomic status. I've had some years where my neediest Title I school in Herndon, needy, incredibly, where they couldn't even, they couldn't even put together a PTA. They had the largest student activities fund because of the aggressive nature of the principal, who is very successful, and a community that just locked their arms and helped the students in the schools. They had more money than the most, the wealthiest PT. That's what I say, it's always outliers, but it is good to take a look at that. But again, and we also will draw a limit on building needs, on what parents can, can advocate and pay for. And again, it's very important that we do that. Because parents will say, well, I will just raise funds to renovate the school. We'll raise funds to put in X, Y, or Z. Mr. Plattenberg understands how that goes, because they will ask him, can't we just write a check? And the answer, and the answer is, is no. And so putting a limit on what parents can upfront fund outside of the, out of the tax base is, is really very important. So anyway, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Next, we have Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. First, I want to address some of the comments regarding the partnerships because as some of you know, I've been advocating for the heat map that we finally got this year for over four years. And so I was very happy to see that the heat map was first done and that you're taking a deeper dive, Mr. Smith, I really appreciate that. One thing I will urge you is that we want to clarify in that partnership, heat map and the work that you do, that there are different categories and different qualities or values of different partnerships. You know, there is much-needed, very much-appreciated partnerships to give backpacks. But there's also partnerships that include real tangible resources, be it in financial dollars to subsidize special programs at a school or in providing mentoring. So, so when you do that, I hope that you're going to do that deeper dive and provide that information in a, in a much more contextualized manner. So thank you in advance for that. But I want to talk about the FCPS promise in the context of One Fairfax. When I was growing up here in Fairfax, and I am old, but the one thing about being a student of the '60s and '70s in Fairfax is that no matter what school you went to in Fairfax County, you were guaranteed a certain level of programming and a certain level of opportunity. Today, we no longer ensure that each one of the schools has that same consistent level of programming. So I'm going to urge my colleagues on this board, and I'm going to urge the superintendent, that we fulfill the One Fairfax promise through an FCPS promise that ensures that we have a certain level of enrichment programs at every single elementary, middle, and high school. And we should define what that level of enrichment programs rather than just remediation is. We should also define that there's a certain level of expectation and the quality of the building in which our children go to school in and the sports fields and associated facilities for every school. And that should be a priority. So that the FCPS promise means that no matter where you go, you get a certain level of programming, a certain level of experience. And that will alleviate much of the angst that people may have when we look at boundary changes. And so I would like from the superintendent, and this is a next step, is how we craft what is the FCPS promise when we talk about resource stewardship? And what do we want to ensure that every school has? A good example is that Mount Vernon High School had to replace their own scoreboard a couple of years ago. And they replaced their scoreboard with what they could afford to get funding through their community at. And they took out a loan and they had an extraordinary cost associated with the change in zoning requirements on how you anchor that scoreboard. Well, now they have a number of other scoreboards, the ones inside the building that need to be replaced because the light bulbs are no longer replaceable. And they're finding a challenge in raising the funds to be able to do that. And so when we talk about resource stewardship and the FCPS promise, I believe that we need to ensure that we honor that promise and make sure that we have a certain level of consistency, a consistent delivery of what FCPS means regardless of where you live in this county. Did I get in in three minutes?
You're at 3 minutes and 51 seconds, but thank you.
I apologize for my 51 seconds, but I'm passionate about this issue.
That's fine, that's fine. We're, they're having a little more latitude on the go-backs, but I am trying to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to speak. Ms. Evans?
Thank you, and I'm glad that I'm following, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I certainly support where you're going with this, and I think you've made some very important and critical points. So I, I hope we do move forward on that. And in, in my, my, my final comment and request is in some ways related to that. And I do want to point out that our overarching strategy 11 does relate to active and positive communication and engagement. If anyone's wondering why I'm raising a brand-new issue that may not have been part of this report, one of the things that I have been increasingly concerned about is the reputation of some of our schools. We have unfortunately some very destructive online sites that rate our schools. And more than one, GreatSchools.org, a school digger. And I, and people in my community come to me and say, why is my school, my wonderful, amazing school rated a two or a three? And so I think it is time that this school system address this issue proactively. We can no longer afford to just say on our website, oh, all our schools are fine, they're all good. We, we need to take proactive action on this. This goes back to the One Fairfax.
And we do know that a lot of times these ratings track ESOL, poverty, special needs. Doesn't tell you anything about how your child is going to be educated, doesn't tell you anything about the quality of a school. So as a next step, having said that, as a next step, I would like to task staff with coming back to us with a specific plan for dealing with this issue. I think it's overdue that we address it. So that is another next step that I'm going to be asking for.
Thank you. Ms. Hines?
Thank you. So nothing like a discussion of resource stewardship to get us talking about absolutely everything, right? I appreciate your effort to keep us on track. I think we should remember that we have a lot of next steps now on deck and that takes time to talk about as well. So I just wanted to reply to a couple of things. Ms. Strauss, thank you for mentioning the firewall. It is really important between what parents can pay for and what we pay for. There are places where we know though that there are breaches in the firewall. And I'm talking specifically, there's a pattern I've seen of parents at wealthier schools paying for things that the principal then doesn't have to pay for. And then the principal has money to hire a full-time AART, for example. That's something that happens quite a bit, which is why I'll be looking for an opportunity in budget season to at least fund a full-time AART in all of our Title I schools. Something that we can do to try to balance that where we see it happening. So, and to Mr. Moon, thank you for raising salaries. You know, salaries matter. They, you know, they're, when they're, when they're a problem, they're a huge problem. And a few years ago, I think we were able to turn the tide of unfunded budget years or underfunded budget years by telling that story about how we were losing teachers because our salaries were not where they should be. I would just say, I think it's important, as Ms. McLaughlin said, to make sure we're looking at data, but also to make sure we're talking to our employee associations because some of the opportunity costs of raising our salary scale above that ninety-five to one-hundred-and-five percent of market average could be things like class size and administrative support and things that affect working conditions. So, you know, it's a balance, but thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Dahlia?
Well, thank you. I'll be brief because I think most of my points were mentioned. Thank you, Ms. Hines. I was going to say, while I appreciate we have that firewall and we do have to protect it, this is something that we hear across schools of how principals and the community are able to find ways to purchase additional staffing. So I guess, I don't know if you have the specific next step, but I'm trying to figure out how while we can't ask, you know, PTAs to share their budgets, we have the principal's budget. We know how the principal is spending their funding, where it's coming from, and to get a better sense of where those inequities are starting to arise, even when we build systems to hopefully protect that. So, you know, I would like us to start to see and to maybe, well, A, on the principal's side, to get more information and training around how, you know, schools are receiving funds or allocating funds when they're able to purchase additional positions, how they do that school by school. And then maybe having, on a longer-term step of what are some carrots to help us, you know, be able to have a little bit more understanding whether under the foundation or through your office, Ms. Burden, of the way funds are utilized in schools. So hopefully we can start to think more proactively about that, but it's kind of a little bit longer term. And then my other is around the communication, so I agree with you, Ms. Evans, is the point. But, so not just on the, how do we try to, you know, stop what is very detrimental practice that we have no control over, we can try to work with. But on the other side, I know your staff is working on communications with our schools, Dr. Brabran. But I've had several conversations with, you know, realtors, developers, how do we really work in our community to help share the stories of our schools? So it's not just either a test score or a number that's really arbitrary because they keep changing their formulas. And so I really, I really do hope we can get a better sense of how we're doing that, how we're communicating the story of each school and what's offered, the enrichment programming. And if it's not on par, it needs to be on par across the system.
If I could just jump in, John Torrey and his staff have been working really with a pilot group of schools to really help beef up their communication. I'm going to get something out of the BB and then if the board wants to do a work session to dive into more deeply, we could certainly work at scheduling that if it's the board's.
And I guess my follow-on to that is once they've done that work, I would like that, then I would like us to maybe find a way to have a small committee or task force from members of the community, the MVAR, the, you know, business community to say, okay, this is what we propose. How does this work on your end? How can we help it easier? Because they can share information we create. They can't talk about schools. There's a lot they can't do, but if they have information, they can share. So I guess my next step would be, once we've put something together, to have some kind of, just even a working group or task force to look at that.
Thank you, Ms. Palczek. Ms. Darnett Colback?
Yeah, I'll just follow up specifically to that point and Ms. Evans' point. You know, there's been a few schools in my community and I have probably definitely tried to poo-poo what those rating sites do. But I think the time has come to stop that. We've been ignoring it and, as you said, Ms. Evans saying, and that has been my response. But when you see real property values going down, when you see people moving out of the community, when you see people not coming in, when you personally get calls of saying, you know, I looked at it and I didn't believe it and, you know, now I love this school, but it takes a long, those are the exceptions to the rule. And, and so it is a big problem and I think we need to look at it as such because in ways, they are making defamatory comments about our schools that have huge impacts upon the classroom, across property values. And we have to stop pretending that, oh, that website, don't worry about it. We can't because it's making huge negative impacts in some of our schools. So, Dr. Brabran, I would be happy to work with you, your team. I'm sure there'd be several of us who can do that. But that, but that issue has to be addressed and we've got a, I think we're all in agreement about it. I just want to add my additional comments about what I've seen and what I've heard and the problems it's creating for a couple of my schools.
And, and Ms. Darnett Colback, so you? Okay, great. So I did want to just add to that comment. And I actually went, I was with a number of my colleagues at Lee High School and another high school. And I think one of the primary problems is that those sites, particularly Great Schools, does not recognize the IB program and the significant contributions that that has made. And I would really appreciate it, Dr. Brabran. I don't know if this is appropriate. I'm just throwing it out there. We could certainly have community members write them and tell them that they're wrong, but I think your letterhead might mean a little bit more. And so, in any case, getting out the good word about what some of, what's happening when you look at where those kids were going, it rivals any school in Fairfax County. It is one of the best-kept secrets.
We'll give you an update on the, what I call the project minimum approach to the communications outreach. But I'm certainly willing as a next step to do a legal and administrative review of what our options are regarding these sites.
We like all of that. Okay. I think a lot of, I do want to make sure we're following the data as Ms. McLaughlin mentioned. I know we've been trying to reach that ninety-five to one-hundred-and-five percent as Mr. Moon mentioned. And so I'd like to know, you know, part of the data I think we need to look at is, given the work that we've done, really where are we? And how is that changing our numbers a little bit? Certainly want to take a look at that. Okay. So we're doing pretty well. And Megan, you can, we will do your go-back. I would like to ask you to stay within the three minutes so we can get to our next steps.
I appreciate that. Actually, I can hopefully do it in thirty seconds because when I reflect on it, I just wanted to share with my colleagues that this probably has a crossover between resource stewardship and the budget. And so I'll bring it up at our budget conversation on January twenty-second. But I did want to bring everybody's awareness that I'm concerned that, as a board member, I was not aware that while we control the Fairfax County school instructional calendar for students, we don't control the employee calendar. And over the Thanksgiving holiday, the winter and New Year's holiday, many of us became aware that we're not following what the county government does for when we close central offices. It doesn't even reflect what state and federal governments do for closing central offices. And years ago, when the division asked the board support for closing on July 5th, we found out that that cost one-point-five million dollars in salaries and lost worker productivity for one day. So I do think that we've got to, when we think about resource stewardship, we need to be benchmarking what we're doing against not just other school divisions, but what we're doing in the county. Equity is equity. Equity is for, if you're a government employee in Fairfax County or you're a school employee, you deserve similar salaries and raises every year based on, you know, the metrics that are used. But if you're getting a cost of living on the county side, you deserve one on the school side. And I've advocated for years. But equity also has to do with days off, paid vacation days off. And I'm concerned at some things I've seen recently. So I'll bring that up as a budget thing because as I thought about it, you know, but I wanted Mr. Smith to think about this and Ms. Burden because frankly, from a resource stewardship reporting out, if even we close five more days in the county in any given year, that could be seven-and-a-half million dollars right there. That's a resource stewardship decision.
So did you want to make that a next step now or you just want to?
No, I still think in the end I can submit it as a budget question, but it might be something we think about if we're trying to report out our excellence in resource stewardship. That's a metric.
Okay. All right. I think we are ready for next steps. Okay. Does number one represent what you stated, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Specify what the footnote is or do you have that written down? And it was, yeah, it's the, we were going to put in a footnote regarding what the FRM, the Needs-Based Staffing is. And then we were also going to add a footnote regarding on page sixteen on the difference between why the WABE, WABE, okay, I'm sorry. The WABE guide has a different average cost per pupil than what we are showing on slide sixteen.
Okay. That, is that, okay. Is everybody in agreement with that? All right. Next, we have Ms. McLaughlin. Are you comfortable? And if other folks, if you can look ahead to your thing. Ms. McLaughlin, is that okay?
Yeah, I just would like to change it where it says our overall plan. If it, we can just put in our strategic plan and estimated timeline. Thank you.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that? All right, next. Megan, did you take a look at that?
Yep, that's what I was asking for.
Okay. Everybody okay?
Could I offer a friendly amendment to that of the monetary slash, it may be hourly partnerships, because we have partnerships where we have mentors and volunteers in the classroom that may not have a monetary value per se.
In kind.
In kind, yeah.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Ms. McLaughlin? Okay. Is everybody comfortable? All right. Ms. Evans? You're good? Okay. It's going to take me a minute to read that.
Ms. Kiskemara, I'm reading Ms. Evans and I'm just wondering maybe a little bit of clarity from hers. The way it's reading, it's saying that the highest-needs schools receive the most outside support. I mean, I think that we want to say equitable support because, I mean, again, are you, are you trying to say that whatever is being done that's, you know, with?
And me, I saw that too. I was going to say, we're examining the inequities presented by the issue that you're highlighting perhaps. Would that phrase help you?
Sure. Where would we put this?
Are being taken, what steps are being taken to support our higher school?
So, Ms. McLaughlin, you're?
And seeking grants and private funds to address inequities.
There's inequity, Ms. Evans, also even with not just our athletic booster funding that comes in or the PTAs, but, I mean, it's anything from band to drama boosters. I mean, I think if we want to have a macro-level request for staff to capture up, working with their principals, how much outside funding is coming in to some schools and not to others?
Right. And I do think, if I may, I mentioned this, Mr. Smith, if you're comfortable with that, I do think we, to the extent that we can look at the funding coming from PTAs, as Ms. Palczek mentioned, because obviously the, it's being funneled through the principals so we know what's happening there. Is it? Oh, okay, 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 all right.
So.
And not in all cases to, as a former elementary principal and?
Okay, so we'll focus on number four for right now. Did you have?
I have questions for the maker. And I know, Sandy, you talked about, I'm looking at it, not looking at you, sorry, so I can talk about it. You did speak about that specifically and so you wrote it, but do you not, do you want it not take a broader role as far as, I mean, and I know then it gets too big, or should there be, should I think about a separate one? Where you talk about the inequities in course offerings and things like that.
So I think that is a separate issue because what we're talking about here is outside funding, you know, and I don't mind including PTA in this. You know, PTA boosters, I mean, that's all, you know, private extra funding. I don't mind expanding it to other extracurriculars. I just don't want to lose in here the issue of athletics because I think that's one where we, it is a huge issue. So I support what you're talking about and what Ms. Corbett Sanders talked about in course offerings. I think that's a separate issue. And so I would urge you to have a next step specifically on that.
So are you, did you want to perhaps change the language with, to, where it says might FCPS use to make, I would say, to address these inequities rather than a predetermined outcome?
To make sure that the, let's see.
Where it says?
To these inequities, rather than specifying that they would get more. I think, I hope the understanding is though that, that what we're really talking about is getting, you know, that they should be getting more funds. If they have higher needs, they should be getting more funds. But if this is, if this is clear that that's what we're talking about, what's trying to address these inequities?
Well, yeah.
That's fine with me to talk about inequities. And then if we, that's fine, Madam Clerk, to take that out and include that if that's acceptable to the board. And then if we want to expand the piece about athletics to say athletics and extracurriculars, that certainly is fine with me and I think that's a good change.
Okay.
And other extracurriculars.
Okay. Is everyone, we'll get that spelling at some point, but is everyone comfortable with that? Okay. All right. Moving on to number five?
The only thing I would say is not just if not available, but in addition, we should, we should look at all principals.
Right.
Operating budget to make that analysis.
Again, right, to address these, the same inequities that were mentioned.
And to understand where funds are used to purchase especially staffing.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, PTA funding is not used to purchase staffing. I think it's?
It's used to purchase other things, so.
Right. Where it might impact staffing, I think is more accurate.
And more of the question is right, to be able to see.
Right.
When principal, we should be able to see is when a principal purchases staffing positions, right?
I understand.
Right.
Okay, I just think that may be a little bit more.
I just want to make sure that makes sense in my question. I get you understood.
Impact staffing, okay. Is everybody comfortable with that? Okay. The purpose of that comment had to do with, and I'm forgetting the particular phrasing, but there, we were dealing with some of the salary changes and trying to bring it up to, bring it up to the 95%. And that funding, that charge is impacting Title I schools in particular, their funding. So I'm not sure, as long as staff understands what we're talking about, I'm good.
Well, actually, Ms. Keys-Gamar, I would appreciate the details in there because when we go back, I do like to see what we're specifically asking for.
Did you have a suggestion as to how to put it in?
Well, my question was, was what exactly you were looking for in this? So we can, we can hone the focus on it.
Well, and maybe Ms. Burden can help me with the language. But the reports that I'm receiving is saying that because we've done, we're trying to bring the salaries up to a certain standpoint, it's taking Title I money. Okay? And I'm trying, I'm looking for the impact on our Title I schools as a result of that change. Ms. Burden, did you want to try to help us with some of that language?
So in terms of staffing specifically? In terms of staffing, okay. So I think we should clarify that you're talking about staffing. And is part of the issue that you don't want it to dilute the needs-based?
Right, I'm wondering, I want to make sure we understand what impact that change is having specifically on Title I schools and their funding.
And that it's not being used to supplant needs-based?
And so we've done some initial looks at that. We've taken a look at that, and so I understand what you're saying. And as we talked earlier about looking at those staffing formulas that we currently have for schools, we've noted that schools are having to pay a higher freight because as compensation costs go up, then the cost of that teacher increases. And so we've been able to help some of those schools that have incurred some higher costs, even this past year alone. Because as the cost of those individual staff members went up, their portion did go up. And so we've done that work, and we can provide some of that information to the board.
Maybe that's the phrase I'm looking for, compensation requirements impact on Title I funding. Yes, yes, yes. Does that make sense to everybody? Is it reflected? I haven't had a?
We totally get it. We've already done that look this year, and so we?
I have a, sorry, quick question on that. But when I was the fee sub rep, they were also seeing a similar issue. Is that, can that be addressed as well for fee sub programming?
For additional costs, so.
Right, when compensation increases.
We took care of that in the budget, didn't we? We're already on fee sub. That was salaries and benefits for fee sub, I think we already covered.
It is covered this year.
That's.
But for the strategic plan, I guess, I would just think.
All right, is everybody okay with number six? All right, number seven. So, okay. Okay. Tammy, are you?
I just had a question. Just as someone who works, you know, in an elementary school, and I have all levels of ESOL in my classroom. Is that easy to do? Because I know that when the ESOL teacher works with kids, it tends to be the whole group.
It's probably not easy to do, but to be honest, we're actually in the middle of a deep dive. It's not in this year's budget to really do this ESOL staffing work. So I kind of way, I welcome this work because we're already really doing it, and then we'll show you whatever the limitations are. And elementary is a different formula than what we do with middle and high, and we're taking a look at that, so. I'm fine with bringing it, and then we can tell you any limits to what we did when we did the disaggregation for the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because I think both for that and we start to talk about special ed is, are there different costs for different models of how we approach them, right?
So, but we're talking about ESOL right now, right?
Yes, and I'm good on that, yeah.
So are we comfortable with number seven? All right, number eight. Okay. All right. Is everybody fine with it? All right, okay, number nine. Does that reflect your thoughts, Ms. McLaughlin?
No, not really. I think what I was saying is we needed to examine the staffing in our facilities division. Determine how we can be more efficient and effective with utilizing.
Empty classrooms? Okay. Okay. Are you comfortable with that now, Ms. McLaughlin?
I guess just to provide context, it should say examine sufficient, examine if sufficient staffing exists.
Okay. And facilities division? Oh, okay, you're talking about Mr. Plattenberg's office. Okay. Okay, all right, I'm with you now. All right, are you comfortable with that? Is everybody comfortable with that? Okay, all right, number 10.
So my concern is that our substitute usage, I believe, runs at about 20 to 25, $30 million a year for our substitute costs. So having a metric on a resource stewardship that shows, you know, measures our substitute usage over time, and are we making strides to reduce the use of substitutes? From, because it's not simply just the cost for substitutes, but we also know from teachers and students that that disruption in learning has an impact.
So as a clarification, as we're preparing to bring the strategic plan back to the board, that particular metric, and I agree that to have that information is really a very good metric to have. We haven't built that into the current strategic plan. Is there guidance from the board that we would like to see this added to the plan as part of our presentation to the board and then have that discussion? It just helps as we think about the information that we're going to bring so that we don't bring something to the board and then have more questions about why or why not something wasn't added. So I just wanted to get some clarification on that because we'll be bringing that to the board in February.
Did you want to clarify now or perhaps work with him in making sure he understands what you're asking, Ms. McLaughlin?
No, I actually, it was to my colleagues. I mean, I was saying to all of you, I think that is a significant cost annually to our $3 billion budget. And whether we want to give guidance to the superintendent and Mr. Smith that we think that there's value to that metric. If people don't feel comfortable answering it today, the reason it says consider adding is because I think then the superintendent needs to report back to the board. If you don't think that's a significant metric, explain why.
Okay.
Could be my only other thought, but I just.
So you're posing that question. I guess I'm struggling with how it's a next step for staff.
Well, I thought that part of the resource stewardship report is we're wanting to continuously improve upon it. So even if it's not added into this year's report, they will be preparing a report next year for the board. And I happen to think from a strategic focus, that's important for next year's report.
That's the clarity we're looking for. Because again, we'll be bringing the metrics and targets to the board, and we've developed those currently. We've added some things around trailers, and we know that we get to add that information, wanting to know when and how we should add that, that's helpful.
Is everybody comfortable? It sounds like staff is comfortable. Okay? All right, number 11.
I think that's clear unless anybody wants to weigh in and say it needs to. I mean, what I was saying, Ms. Burden, is that would be in bands. I mean, it's not like necessarily saying, you know, the cost for people in special education. I think there's bands of, well, yeah.
Teresa's not here today, but I'll work with her and Francisco. We'll figure out how to, we'll break down what we have, and then we can come back like anything else and then show to the board what that is. And there really are some maybe different ways to slice this. Implementation, in-school system placement, out-of-placement, CAT A, CAT B. By specific category of disability. Let me just work with Teresa and Francisco and Marty and Lee Cannon. We'll get back to you.
Yeah, I mean, I know Ms. Hines spoke to this first, and I just followed up behind her, so she may want to say something. But I think even if we did it percentage-wise of, you know, the percentage of special education students that fall into, you know, this band of cost and that band of cost, it just gives more context.
Okay, are you, you're comfortable with that, Ms. Hines? Did you want to?
Yeah, I think so. The only thing I would say, and Janie, I think you brought this up, is that no matter how, I think it's good to break it out. But no matter how we break it out, we are going to end up defending something. And we're going to have to be able to do that. Because if we're spending tens of thousands of dollars on one student, right? Or a very small number of students in a certain category, we're still going to have to show that that is our legal responsibility or something.
Right, and the other caveat is we're going to break it out. Students who are on residential placement long-term, we receive other funds for that. So there needs to be enough information so that we don't get immediate blowback on how dare we, which is questions on funding for.
I fully concur. My only concern is, right now, the way it looks, we're labeling our special education population as costing two, over 200% more than, and I think that's a disservice to a lot of students.
It's not everyone.
Yeah, and we, right. We used to, and we used to break it out. So you can find that in other budget books as to how we used to break it out.
All right, is everybody comfortable with number 11, I believe we're on? Okay, all right, number 12.
That needs more.
All right, why don't you give us more?
What we're talking about is the FCPS promise. The portrait, we have portrait of a graduate. We need to have a portrait of our individual types of schools. So what, equity in programming?
Equity in program offerings is the language that I would.
Yeah, that's exactly where I was going. Is that we need to have a definition of what is our equity in program offerings to include actual courses available as well as extracurricular and enrichment programs, enrichment opportunities. And so we need to have this so that we can, that's really when we talk about resource stewardship, how we have to supplement one school versus another if we can't realize the promise. We have certain schools in, Tammy and my area, that because of a variety of factors, we actually aren't offering the highest level of courses that are demanded by our families. And so we see people trying to find other ways of going to other schools.
Okay, is that more accurate now? I'm sorry.
How I can craft equity program?
I think so.
Yeah.
Would you mind putting my name there as well, please? I appreciate that, thank you.
I'm just curious if you, when we, Scott, do you know what we're asking you to do when we say how we craft equity? What does that mean to you?
Well, I think we need to go back and look at where we have existing gaps in program offerings. That's the problem that board members are bringing up. And do our own review to see what courses are missing.
I would change the word craft to ensure equity.
Yeah, ensure.
That's really what we're talking about.
I have a question on this. We have a system of stipends. I mean, every year, through course offerings and everything, we establish what is going to be, you know, the core curriculum. And I do agree, looking particularly at the highest level of classes, that's critical. What is going to be considered core? And then the question is, do you overstaff in order to provide the core? Years ago, we always did, before we ran out of money. And I would hope that we would concentrate on those pieces. What are the core extracurriculars? What are the core courses in offering the full range? Looking at stipends. And then authorizing overstaffing if that is needed in a special needs school.
Well, as long as we don't define the core as being the core four. Because the core has to be those higher level courses or those courses that we know should be part of the FCPS promise. So it's things like, we've cut journalism in some of our schools. Journalism should be something that we always offer. We've cut, you know, so there's a whole series of courses that we should consider to be part of the FCPS promise, no matter where they're at. And so maybe part of this is defining what that is.
Right, exactly. And it's, yeah, and that's always a good piece to take.
My gut on this, we need to do some work, then bring it back to you to kind of react to it.
That's what it sounds like, it's an ongoing discussion, so.
Right, then we can tweak it after doing the first draft.
Corbin Sanders and Ms. Darnett Kofax, if you guys are comfortable with that, can we approve that?
I'm good with that.
Okay, is everybody else okay? All right, thank you, number 13.
So actually, I'd like to have my original next step put up there because it had more detail in it. I agree with the legal review and, you know, and I'm, you know, I'm certainly fine putting anybody's name up there that wants to be on there. But I think there was more detail in the way I wrote it.
Yeah, I think there was, but you said you emailed it to her?
I did email it.
Okay.
Okay, so how can I get it to you?
Okay. Oh, she can't get emails right now?
She can see her phone.
Oh.
So Ms. Keys-Gamar, do you want to take a five-minute break? You got it?
Okay, but let's not lose, let's not lose the part about the legal piece. And, so you can take the words "next step" out of there. And so at the end, we can say, or in the middle, you know, to include a legal analysis. And Ms. Palchek, you also had a recommendation on?
Yeah, so mine looks like it's still in 13. And to me, it's, right, it's, they are in conjunction. So one is kind of more the stick and then the carrot. So how do we, and internal, you know, how do we try to address it? And then how to reach out to, you know, community and government and business partners to try to, you know, give that fuller picture? Essentially, this is how private schools share their story.
So does 13 capture what you needed to capture?
Yeah, I think it does, as long as it's implied the task force.
Well, I guess, I'm just wondering, don't we, don't we want to combine these two or no?
Well, I think, I'm going to recommend we leave them separate. I think, because that way, I think what you wrote is good, Sandy, and I don't want to lose that. So if we can deal with what's in 13, and then 13, I think maybe at least what I would recommend.
It's just because it's the same thing.
Yeah, I think it's the same thing, so.
Yeah, I mean, basically, Ms. Palchek's can just be added to the end of what's in 14, right? And then we capture it all.
Okay.
Because I also think, to Ms. Evans' point, if there are things that we cannot do legally, then I want the community to help us address those, right?
But I also wanted to make, if you're comfortable with that, there was a point I made that I want to make sure is in there. Are you comfortable with that? With what that's?
I am, yeah.
Okay, so the other part had to do with making sure we're promoting Dr. Brae-Bram, we're promoting some of the things that we do have in those schools, especially like an IB program. Finding ways to promote those kinds of things and talking about that. So I know it says ways, but I specifically know that there's a thinking about AP, and there's a lack of recognition of the value added in some of our, in our IB programs. So I wanted to make sure that was included.
Just because that is a nugget, and multiple said it, that unfairly undermanned our reputation, including the omission of IB.
Right, good, uh-huh.
Right, specifically, in looking at one of those recently, specifically, they were focusing only on AP. And as a result of that, the schools in some of the regions that have been mentioned were rated very lowly.
Because they didn't include the IB. That happened at Annandale too, right?
That was my point, that was my point.
And I guess, and I'll just make the point to?
So you might want to put my name up there. Go ahead.
That, that the superintendent, it doesn't have to be in the next step, but the superintendent should review the schools that were chosen for the first round. Because I think for the communications help, to my mind, TJ doesn't need to. because I think for the communications help, to my mind, TJ doesn't need to enhance its reputation with the community. So I think that needs to be reviewed.
Okay. All right. Is everybody okay with this now? All right.
There was one that was missing. I had also asked to get the report about the English language learners, and they've said that they will do that. But I'd like that captured here, too.
What, how do you want to say it?
Just, staff will provide the report on, looking at the, is it return on investment? Is that the way to say it?
ROI.
ROI on English language learners? Yeah.
So I think that should just be added as the last. Right. Okay. Okay.
And that's, and this isn't something I'm asking them to do. They've done it, and they simply will provide the report that they have done or are working on.
We'll distribute the report.
Yeah. That's right. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. So if everybody's comfortable with number 14? Okay. Ms. Corbin Sanders, you had a final comment?
Yeah. There was just one last. I had asked for the cost of the alternative programs to be broken out as well.
Okay. Okay. And is everyone comfortable with that? All right. Mr. Moon?
Just want to clarify one thing from Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, the, you know, these next steps adopted by the board, my understanding is that all the names are deleted. So when someone says that my name should go up, they're not going to remain. Just wanted the board's understanding of that.
Okay. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah. One thing that I didn't see captured that Ms. Hines spoke to, and I know I was talking with her sidebar, I would like to see for next year's report, we consider some of the metrics we had on our energy savings and efficiency. In particular, I'm concerned that we were doing the Energy Star building as a metric, and yet we're the 10th largest school system in the United States, and we're the largest in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So as a metric in terms of being strategic, of course, we would have some of the largest number of schools being identified for Energy Star. I think there's other really great metrics coming out of Mr. Plattenberg's shop about our energy savings that should be profiled.
What language are you suggesting a next step? What is, what is the language?
Right. Just review the metrics in the resource stewardship report for next year in terms of what are. No, I wasn't asking it to affect Ms. Hines. Actually, we just keep her number eight. It's all fine. You could actually just, either I can have mine separated out. I just think we need to review and consider what are the most strategic metrics to reflect our energy resource stewardship.
Okay. Are you comfortable with the way she has that up there?
I mean, I'm welcome if anybody wants to refine the language, but.
My only question would be, that's great. Could our deadline for that be the next time the board considers metrics?
Yeah. It was meant to be for future reports, not for passing this one.
Because we will sit down, I mean, I think part of this is, we sit down every year, right, as a board, and we look over the metrics, correct? So as long as it's, you know, in time for our next board conversation about metrics. Does that make sense?
So, so correct. So the, this coming February is when we'll talk about metrics for the entire plan, but if we're talking about out-years, we can certainly look at that.
So my point being, Ms. Hines, that I didn't want us to find us next year as a school division. The reports being made, that metric is still there, and we didn't consider from a continuous improvement standpoint the division looking at it and saying, is the existing metric on Energy Star building ratings, honestly, I think it's a little weak in the report. Anyone who understands our size looks at it and just, it's, I don't think it tells the story of the strength of what's going on.
Like more, you'd like for it to.
I like us to have a more robust metric in there, and I think naming off the Energy Star building number or identification. And we even read the narrative, quite honestly, anybody who knows anything about our size says, why is that a bragging point? We're the largest division in Virginia, and we're the 10th largest in the country. So I would hope to see that at a minimum. I think there's other things that you can spotlight. If you want to keep it in, fine, but it's kind of a weak metric compared to the great work Mr. Plattenberg's shop is doing.
So I wanted to clarify earlier that this was a transition report. So there are metrics that we identify in this report that won't necessarily be in the new strategic plan and the metrics that we've shared with the board. And so that's the clarity around whether or not we should add certain metrics to the new strategic plan around substitutes and perhaps how we look at energy efficiency within our buildings. We hadn't had that discussion as a board throughout the 18 months that we've been looking at the strategic plan. And so the question is whether or not we add that as part of the process for February or if we go with the current plan that we've shared with the board and are sharing in two-by-twos and then have that as part of discussions down the road.
Mr. Smith, I just want to clarify for my colleagues. In the end, it's, we need to hear direction from you and the superintendent, Mr. Plattenberg, on what you believe are the most strategic metrics to reflect and celebrate and showcase what FCPS is doing. I didn't want to catch any staff off guard saying, I think that's a weak one. What else is there? And you guys would look at us and say, I didn't know you had a problem with it. So I'm just bringing this to everybody's attention. I think we can be stronger in that area. And when and if you want to bring those suggested metrics, but the board is not equipped to start brainstorming on better metrics. That's not our expertise.
And I think the reality is if we have it sooner, we'll bring it sooner when we bring it in February. If we don't, we'll bring it, you know, we'll bring it as soon as possible, as soon as practicable.
Okay. So I think we, I think we get the point. That, I think that was the end of our next steps? Yes? Okay. So if we would note, I think we took about 37 minutes on next steps. We'll take that, try to leave more time next time. If we could take a break, I think until a quarter of, is that okay? Is everybody in agreement? All right. Thank you.
And I will remind everybody that this work session is scheduled to go till 5:00, not 4:00 o'clock, as our agenda says.